Ladies and gentlemen, executive session. All right, we have second. All those in favor of coming up to executive session. All right. If y'all will pray with me, then we'll do the pledge. Pray with me. Lord, thank you for allowing us to gather here this evening. We ask that you watch over us. We ask that you protect us. We ask that you watch over our loved ones that we left at home. We ask that you watch over our decisions, that our decisions glorify your name. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. We want the riches of America and super holy, which is his hands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First, we have approval of the agenda. We need a strike number fourteen quickly.
Fourteen is not fourteen.
Okay, I'm sorry. Rhonda, can you scroll down on that? So fourteen was a grant affidavit that they thought that we needed, but we do not. So, we're okay. All right, now we need approval of the agenda as modified. Thank you. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, next, we're gonna open it up for appearance and public comment. So if you got something to say, please step to the podium. Tell us your name.
My name is Annalise Durham. Most of my friends call me Penny. I live at two thirty Hawaii Street. And I am very curious as to what is going on with the property behind it. I've had my realtor, my realtor's attorneys, the courthouse, multiple times, try to find out who purchased the property. We don't know, and I would like to know who purchased that property. Considering that there have been multiple surveys, different people out there doing things to the property. We've asked who they work for. They laugh, turn around, laugh, and walk away. And I want to know what's gonna happen to that property. It is a nice property. It has a lot of vacant land, and it backs historic district. It backs my back door, and in fact, the property line is in the middle of my deck.
I can tell you, there's been no applications by anybody. I, myself, as a city manager, have had nobody call me to ask any questions.
Well, the owner of the house at the time, Jeff, I asked him point blank, and he told me that he had no clue.
What I'm saying though is, nobody has called the city inquiry at the property.
But how do you not know who owns the properties because they get now since January?
Have you checked the key public to see what the tax records show?
Yes, tax records still shows previous owner. Not even Jeff, his father.
That would be, that would be a question for the tax assessors and...
I have been to tax assessors. I have asked, and they don't know because it's not been registered. And like I said, my real estate person and his attorneys have looked into it and have found nothing.
So nobody's, see, what they would be picking up is that they would have filed their deed when they purchased the property?
But they didn't.
But that's not...
I, oh, I know, I'm not asking, I'm just saying. The city is one of the largest properties, the nicest properties, then sold, that was sold without ever going to market. Rebecca is actually the cousin of Jeff, had no idea until last two weeks ago that it had even been sold.
Because people were stealing things out of his shed. I was trying to get, and stealing things out of the yard. I was trying to get ahold of him. He texted my neighbors. This is how I found out. Our great parents...
So I'm trying to find out...
We do, we do not know as a city because nobody has to report that to us. Nobody has to call.
So, so there's nothing that you know. There's not gonna be property divided up to be sold. How do they do that? How did they come about purchasing a property? It's 1.27 acres. It has a historic house on it, but unfortunately, it just missed the bump of a historic district.
So that's, well, let's go through the zoning process. Last time, we looked at a lot of vacant lands and went through this for a year, talking about...
Yeah, I spoke to you about that last, end of February, maybe March. I talked to you about that.
So we really talked about all these different properties, and that's why we put mortuary in place to make sure that we slow down things, make sure that we get to see apartments pop up and stuff.
Oh, I just don't want something, I'm just trying to figure out how in the world, first of all, that there's a fence post six feet into my deck.
You checked your, you had your survey?
Yes, I have my survey, and it's very, very hard to, I didn't have it surveyed when I purchased because I had one file and it had all, it had been done like in a, so I wasn't really too concerned about it. I guess I should have been a little more concerned, but...
How about the setbacks on your property, though? What's the reason for that?
I have various, I have point zero acre, acre.
But the setbacks on the back of your house, on the back of your deck, has to be so far from the back property line?
The deck was already there when I purchased the home.
I mean, I understand that, but somebody obviously built.
Well, it would be exactly six feet from my back door. A roof line hits the property line.
Thomas, what is our back property line in R1? I wanna say it's fifteen feet.
No, it was a five, then.
Okay, okay. Well, see, that could explain part of that.
One of the houses there is a projection.
The house was built in nineteen sixty-two.
I doubt that deck was built. Somebody probably added that deck, too.
Right, I just need to know what I need to do as homeowner. That's the reason...
I would advise you to get an attorney and get him in service.
Right, that's wonderful.
But that's, see, you will have to deal with the property owner.
Right. Which I'm trying to find out. I can't, I can't believe that such a property was sold, and nobody knows anything about who it was, the part purchased it.
But a real estate attorney will be your best, because you will be...
No, I have one already.
Okay, but that's who will have to deal with this property and the designated property line. As you said, it's in the middle of your deck.
Right.
That's a, that's a civil matter.
Okay.
Yeah, but if somebody wants, like, let's talk about, we've had a question about zoning. So if somebody wanted to come in and rezone that into something different and want to zone that now, or split stuff up, then would we sign and post it? Would those signs a lot harder?
They're about this big. They're orange and black, or, or they, or they, yeah, they're about this big.
How long do they have to be posted?
We put them up fifteen, minimum fifteen days before they're rezoned. I mean, it's advertised in the newspaper a couple times.
Okay, so...
And none of that's been done, because we don't have an application.
But just to give you peace of mind that when that time, if that time happens...
Well, I keep my eyes open every day. Every day, every day, or every three, four weeks.
And you're welcome to call, call my office, still call and ask, has there been an application or anything? I'll tell you.
Right, and I think I have, and I think I did, because I called your office, and they told me to also go to the county courthouse. And I'm like, they don't have anything, and that's why I got to check with my realtor, who needed his due bill checks to try and find something, who in turn took it, his attorneys, who in turn showed me nothing. Still shows the previous owner, Jeff's parents.
I would tell you, though, we get, I get generic phone calls of people asking about infield building on existing lots that were just sitting vacant or has a dilapidated house on them.
Yeah.
So there is a demand for that type of stuff.
Well, I understand there is, but I'm just trying to make sure that we don't have fifteen room houses, or three-story houses, or...
Benon square foot is fifteen hundred square feet, Peter. So we updated all that. If you will give...
I, okay, I'm sorry.
I mean, you can go to the website and look under our land use corpus, or if you will give Megan your email, I can email you the charts tomorrow.
Okay.
And it will, and you and I can go through them.
Okay.
So give her your phone number, too.
I should.
And anybody else that wants to do that, or you can send an email.
Yes, the biggest concern is that there's so much being done to the property that, but yet, there's no one occupying it. I don't believe there's any electric to it. The mailbox is falling down. The, just a lot of different things that don't look like a typical homeowner purchase that is going to move.
And no one has come except for the lawn guys.
The lawn guys.
No, no one has, no one has been on the property except for the lawn guys that stole things. So it's just all very disconcerting, the lack of transparency. Whatever agency is not listing who the owner is, it's all very disconcerting.
We can't get in touch with someone who we don't know, but evidently someone's very active. It's not likely just passed away in a car accident, and we don't know. It's very active. What's going on is active. Days, I was on vacation, and my son called, and he says we were putting fence posts up. So first, we had a new iron pin put down. Then we had wooden stakes with ribbons. And then the other day, we had fence posts, red fence posts.
And you remember all that, they're having the property, like, there's upkeep, you know?
And there are...
Well, it's good.
I mean, yeah.
Well, yeah, but the thing is, why such secrecy? And that is, is disconcerting, very much disconcerting, because...
And I'll tell you this, too, that if you buy a property in the state of Georgia from January the first, it won't reflect the owner until January the first of that year.
Well, mine, I bought mine in April, and it, it showed that in October. That's the problem.
Okay, you said it just is all, if they only update them all at one time on January the first, you might have been just, just strange.
That doesn't sound typical, but, you know.
It's like a whole year.
What's that?
A whole year.
I mean, it's like the, the property was not put on the market. There was no real estate listing ever. We didn't know. He just didn't say anything. He just walked around and said, I don't know.
But you do know that's legal to...
I understand it's legal. That's not the issue. I think, and, and this need saying this. If my property is gonna be four feet from my back door, then I have no problem with that. I will put a fence up on the deck that I have left, and I want to close the rest of my yard, and they can do whatever they want to. My issue is, initially had wanted to purchase a little bit from Jeff, and he said he would, and then he didn't. So now I would like to contribute to the owner of the property because ten things makes a difference.
And that steps into a little bit of a new problem with the zoning where you can't subdivide a lot.
Okay, well, then they're not gonna subdivide the lot. I'll be happy as a little pig in mud.
Yeah, and that's when, like, if you did want to purchase that, that's when it's signed.
Because, well, that's fine. I didn't, you know, I just don't want a house at my back door. And understood what the property was. I had what I thought I understood, that I, I wasn't measuring from the right front point. I was measuring, I was about seven feet off. So, because I have about five feet front yard and zero feet backyard, negative backyard, and a pretty good side yard.
I want to speak in support of her because I live behind her. I live on Hazel Avenue. My name is Joe Berg. I live at four nineteen. That little house that she purchased over the years has been rent by the night, rent, all kinds of house. It was nice to have a neighbor come in and keep it up. But I think the key right now is, this is a done deal, unfortunately. Somebody's bought this property. Nobody will admit to what they're gonna do with it, and the city right now is at a very key turning point where you've got a zoning. And from what I understand, there are some limits about what they can put back there. But I can look out my back window, and in the past, I've seen deer out there in the middle of the night, six raid them. I don't want to look at the back of a three-story townhome or cluster home or whatever. Could go back there, and I don't really know what will be allowed eventually. Penny's got it worse. She's got, like she said, four feet from her door is the property line. And the other issue the city needs to think about before they even do anything else and allow anything back there, Pine Avenue is barely a one-lane street, all right? I can't tell you how many times I've come around there and pulled into the culvert to let somebody go by or come around that curve. I know people don't pay any attention to it. So I always stop back by your house and make sure nobody's coming around the curve. There's also a working alleyway behind her house, Penny's house and mine, that is used. I use it every week.
If someone comes down that alleyway at any speed and takes a ride, we're gonna be in our hairlines.
Right, and it's an alley...
I mean, I have this much space between my house and the house.
And it's an alleyway that the city has maintained, but they also shut off the one up on Sociebe Lane since I've lived here. It's an old street, so I'm worried about what's gonna happen back there in terms of access. And then last but not least is that lovely old house on the corner. That's a historic house. I mean, it looks like a, the old mill houses with the two-door entrance, but it's a two-story, two-story mill house. And shotgun, whatever the term is, I'm sorry. But I'm worried, like you are, that they're gonna tear that down.
I'm afraid. I don't know if someone's tearing down it. It's not protected. I don't know if you can, at points, consult someone else if that can be done.
But you said it missed, it was not designated? Somebody said that?
It's not the historic district. It's at the Har Alleyway.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
On Hazel, so that lot and where Penny is are not protected.
The alleyway, it takes, yeah. My house was built in sixty-two. I'm not worried about it being in historic district. It's, it's a nice little house. It's eight hundred and ten square feet. It's not even up to come as far as square footage goes. I love that house, so...
I hear you loud and clear. But if you'll get with her, I'll be glad to meet you and anybody else to go over those charts and show you what the zoning is today.
I just had a quick question. I was looking at the map.
Yes.
Yes, Horace Gonzalez, I'm new in the city for about a year and a half, over here in Hazel Avenue. What kind of property can they put in a R2, some residential R2? Because that's what, according to the map, that's what is sold. So what kind of properties can they put there?
Is it the same property we're talking about?
The same we're talking about. It's just sold R2 I saw here in the map.
Okay.
If you look at that chart for six point two...
Just want to have an idea of what they can put in.
That's part of what I was saying, that I would send, or you could pull up through our website.
They have it staked off like their lots already, which I don't know if that means anything. Does it?
Right, but the actual zoning right now is R2. So R1 is, our street is R1, that's R2, so...
Right, right, that's why.
Whatever they can put in there. I mean, it may be multiple housing or whatever.
But just, just give us a minute there because...
Because we have another lot right across the street from us on Hazel that has been available, I think, for sale, too. The one that's on the other side of Sociebe, the faces our houses on Hazel.
It is an historic district.
I know, but it could still sell it.
Right.
They just, still have to build something there if they choose. That's what's...
Yeah, just, yeah, but like, the size in R2.
Church, club or lodge, community recreation. I'm just reading down to the alphabetical list. Conservation, conservation subdivision, daycare.
It's just what goes in R2, ma'am. It's not specific for the size of that lot. This is a generic list of items.
Townhome, duplex, multifamily, guest houses, institutional residential living and care facility serving no more than seventeen persons.
So any of that could be built there if you approved it.
Yeah, if we approve it, it has to fit. There's a lot of if, ands, and buts.
That's why we're here.
As two doors.
As two duplexes.
Like what's down on the other side of the prime, when the sewage backed up just with that duplex. Yeah, and that's another problem, you know?
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, we got sewage backup at ours. I had to call out.
You said multifamily is two doors, correct?
Two, no more than that.
How about stories? That doesn't have any effect on your stories?
I was...
Thirty-five feet.
How much?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five feet.
What is that, two-story?
No, it could be three because ten foot, you could have ten foot ceiling in there.
See, that's what they've done down on Blue Ridge. All of a sudden, we have all those houses going up on the side of the hill. I mean, they're up to...
Yeah, people are buying them. I don't change, but hey.
Yeah, from Florida.
Arcane, hillside, and then they have parking like this.
Not Dimmerstynians?
No.
Right.
I can't, I can't walk very good. I've got a question. What's the difference between R2 and R1, a bright yellow and a camel color area?
R1 can be more your single-family homes, just like your home that you live in today.
And also, R2 is over on Legacy Woods where the houses are just a little bit closer here.
And what, and type of share metal is because they're five thousand square foot lots. They don't fit our R1 from back in the day when those were approved. It's a ten thousand square foot lot today. Because you can put four houses on one acre, ten thousand square feet each.
And that's R1, not R2?
Yes.
What's R2? Did you, if you said it, I'm sorry.
Thomas, what's the...
What's R2? What's R2, or lot size for R2?
Lot size in R2.
Are you asking the minimum? Lot size, six thousand square feet.
Six thousand square feet.
Okay, cause it's one point two seven acres. So we're.
So you're looking at four to five.
Which.
R1 lots.
Right, R1, but it's R1, but we're in R2.
I see.
Yeah, so that's why I was, you know, saying what is allowed with R2.
Because they can always, whoever it is can always come in, ask that rezonance to R1. And that, that's when the sign can go up too.
And I would expect, I would expect a hard no. Well, R1 is doing.
And that's what, that's what the people would go out and speak, so.
Well, you've heard it. It's a hard no.
Yeah, they're jumping the norm.
I did not drive to Atlanta to drive to my hometown where my daddy was raised, where I grew up. Drive two and a half hours every day to come home to Dimrest to have my windows fog up if my neighbors take a shower. I'm not doing it. It's a hard no.
We do understand the advocate has property rights as well as you do too.
I understand that.
And we have to look at.
And I'm here asking you to say, that's a hard no. That is, that is not, okay, and I'll be there. But that is not representative of this town. Our town, we have our yards, we have our trees. Don't even get me started about the rumors for the trees out here. I grew up in the, my mother was a teacher in this school for thirty-five years, so I won't get started on the trees out there. But unacceptable. We have a legacy here in Dimrest for a small-town feel. I don't want to sit in front of a piece of property that has houses stacked on top of each other like postage stamps.
Man, I promise you, this council has heard that same discussion many times. They have those same comments about me, I'm from a small town, we're not gonna do that. We don't have, we don't have anybody asking to do a large subdivision. We had one opportunity to do one out of Hancock and we told them to stay in the county, we would provide them water and soup. So this council's not looking to do what you're fearing.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate that reassurance because this has just upset my apple car.
And those maps right there and the zoning books that go along with it took us over a year and a lot of pain and a lot of effort to put together, check this to make sure we get that.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sure. I just, and I appreciate your transparency. At least we get some sort of transparency here because we're not getting it. Whoever bought the house, whoever bought the house, they should fire their lawn people because they're stealing from them. But, um, you know, some, some side, some type of transparency, um, would be nice. And I know that that's not on you, but I do appreciate what you just said and that that's not what you're looking to do. So I do appreciate that because it really worries me.
And again, we're really trying to protect it and protecting now. Because a year ago, if you come in and somebody wanted to come in there and just start building without filing for anything, they could have went in and built six hundred square foot houses all over that property. So by putting those things in place that we have now, protect you from that. So I think there's a lot of great things in place to protect.
So action items for us is we're gonna meet with you. We'll schedule a meeting. Still, I have front stairs fixed, by the way. Um, and.
What'd you say these days?
I have emailed you guys. The, they're your stairs, they're the city's stairs. My partner has MS. Piedmont's college people are running. That's the last thing you want is a Piedmont parent to get on you about their child cracking their egg. We can take a walking meeting if you have time after this. I'll show you.
It won't be deceived.
Listen, she lives right here.
It's right there. It's the two shakes of a lamb's tail, right there. You can look out the store.
Have you read about the huge grant that we've got to rewall that?
Well, well, when's it happen?
Streetscape, right?
It's, the project's starting, so hopefully.
We've been at room, we're up to ten million dollars, but total, but I've got confirmation on two of them so far, about seven million dollars. And North Hazel is one of those streets.
Not North Hazel, we're talking Hazel.
Hazel, the Hazel.
So, so that's all there.
That's Little Hazel.
But we're getting the federal government, and I think you know what I'm going with this. Nothing happens to us, the federal government.
Nothing cancel it.
And have our first panel meeting today, a Zoom call, so.
And that will include sidewalks and lights, is that what I understand?
Three lights and.
Yeah, I think that would include the stairs that are, I mean, when I watch my partner walk, and again, he's got MS, like, I'm just like, oh my God, he's going to get a traumatic brain injury. Um, but, uh, that's not what we're here for. So next action is we're gonna set up a meeting with you and then she's going to contact the civil thing, the civil thing. Okay.
Yeah, I'll count that on time as well.
Okay.
Is anybody else here ready to speak?
Did you finish what you were saying?
Yes, I just wanted that question answered. Okay, I'm not really, I was busy doing something else.
Yes, sir, please.
Last Friday of June, we are so people have asked one of this, one more question. Last Friday of June.
Last Friday of June? Just Friday?
Just Friday, just Saturday. Well, Saturday, we didn't say.
I should be okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it, guys. All right, close appearance of public comment, move over to approval of the minutes. We have several on here. February thirteenth, February twentieth, April first, and April the third. These are emailed up to you guys and we'll take, if you need a moment, take a moment, but otherwise we're intending to motion to approve this. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion if we believe that passes.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in place there? Very good. All right, next we'll turn this over to Thomas for a public hearing. Please, sir, get on the floor.
You want to call it out? Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got set up here three different maps. This map here is the one that we approved back in, um, uh, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. And at that point in time, we took the larger pieces of property to put them agricultural. So somebody couldn't just come and put some together because in agricultural, it's one house per five acres. But this piece of property right here is an existing trailer park that we missed. And in nineteen ninety-two, this exact piece right here, this was the land use map in nineteen ninety-two. This is the same trailer park and it is designated right here as mobile home. And the difference is, we needed to correct that for this property owner. That's the only mobile home park we have in the city that's, now there's mobile homes on single blocks. And we put in there that a mobile home cannot be replaced. If it burns, you cannot go back with a mobile home. So that being the case, we redid this map to make this piece here show as a mobile home designation. The difference is, this is a business set up there. And how this came to light was he's trying to replace a dilapidated mobile home. But he couldn't replace it unless we made this change. But what he has to do is put a brand-new untitled mobile home on that lot. So he may have a nineteen seventy mobile home that he's trying to replace. But he would have to come back with a twenty twenty-five, brand-new mobile home. So we can justify that change in that mobile home park there because of being a brand-new. But no, mobile homes are no longer allowed in the city except in replacing of this. And this is what Thomas is gonna talk about this.
And through our original zoning, it was just an oversight of the state, how we ended up with that. This is just correct back then.
Yes.
Yep. You all know, last November, you all adopted a new zoning ordinance, uh, Title eighty-nine in your code of ordinance is now. You all also, um, entered into a consulting agreement with Jesse Owens. And one of the things that she did was review our zoning ordinance and she made some suggestions as to changes. She and I had a couple of meetings about her suggestions and, uh, what I have done is gone through. Uh, the ordinance made some changes. Um, there are a couple of things that we need to discuss as to what, how you want to handle them. Some of these are just minor clerical cleanup type things. Some are a little more substantial. So I'm gonna, what I plan to do is what I've got up on the screens, um, are, is that ordinance with my red lines. And I'm gonna move through them pretty quick. And, but then if, so if there's something that strikes you that you want to talk about, stop me.
Is it called a Karen? So if.
Because of the number of these, mayor, as we're going through them, rather than have to go all the way through them and then have citizens ask questions like we normally would, if it's okay with the mayor and council, what I would suggest is that they folks be able to ask questions as we go through that. Is that okay with you? So the, just to, to, cause some of you have been here when we were talking about the zoning, some of you have, were not. Some of you are clearly here because.
Very interesting, yes. So, um, our zoning ordinance now, the, the first section is mostly definitions. Then we get into types of uses and it's divided into.
Number of different, in fact, let's just, let me show you all what the headings are.
You got it.
See it? That, that doesn't blow up. So you've got definitions, you got the establishment of the districts, through the colors on the maps. We have a whole, an article on how to deal with non-conforming situations. There's a few changes there. Uh, there's a whole, there's an article that addresses residential zoning districts. That's the ag, the R1, the R2, and now mobile homes. There's Article Five, which deals with non-residential. That's office institutional and the B1 and B2, which are commercial districts. Special use provisions, there are a number of those. Just those are, as you can see, there's a number of those. Those are specific types of uses and in this particular section, there's, there's specific criteria about those types of uses such as daycare centers, drive-through facilities, uh, home occupations, uh, mobile homes, caretaker residence, churches, et cetera. Then you have off-street parking requirements. We have a, a section currently about signs and murals. I'm gonna recommend that the council that be removed. Property appearance standards, uh, amendments, a article on how to amend, uh, either this ordinance or the zoning that's on a particular piece of property. A section about the various permits, building permits, land development permits. An article on administration and enforcement. An article on if somebody's unhappy about something the council does, how they appeal that to court. And then some kind of special articles about watershed and wetland properties. And then planned unit development, which we do currently have any in the, uh, in the, um, city. So, uh, as we move through these, the, it's, the, the first, I don't know, probably twenty or in the definitional section. Um, there's a definition for adaptive reuse. Jesse recommended and I agree that it needs to reference both present or prior uses when it's talking about, uh, adaptive reuse. Um, there are the, uh, we have a definition for amenities. Those are like swimming pools, tennis courts, those kind of things. We, we clarified the language a bit to say that these are examples, but are not an exhaustive list of the types of amenities that may be, uh, in a development. The, we have a definition for animal hospital. Jesse recommended that we remove the reference to animal daycare facilities, which is just a fancy way of saying a kennel. I don't think we, I've been over at the swim center and heard the kennel at the county. I don't think you all want a kennel in the city, so that's why we're removing that. Um, the, so like I said, we've got a, there, some of this is just clerical cleanup. Um, we had a definition for automobile, uh, sales. I added the provision for lease because that's just the way a lot of automobile, a lot of vehicles are transferred these days. Uh, we clarified, we have both, we have, also have a definition for other types of vehicles. This is, it, in the definition, it, it's in a use provision and the, it, it has to do with building and other vehicles and basically it's vehicles other than those that get people around or, or transport stuff. Again, those are mainly clerical errors. There, there's a number of changes in here and I'm not gonna stop on every one. Because of the fact that we have a very small staff and we don't have a planning commission, there are a number of places on our ordinance where we've got city official or designee or, or planning administrator or designee. Effectively, all of those positions are gonna flow through Mark. And so, but in order to make that clear, in some of these places, we've added the, the term or designee to make it clear that it doesn't necessarily have to be Mark and we don't necessarily have to have someone who's called a building inspector. Uh, we contract for those services. The other thing that, that we've had to, uh, adjust for is that generally speaking, we have a zoning ordinance that, uh, that, that makes room for a planning commission. We don't have a planning commission. We talked about this when we were doing it. We are having a difficult time, uh, staffing any of our, uh, citizen-appointed boards. And so what this ordinance says is that if we don't have a planning commission, then you all do everything, including those functions that, um, that a planning commission would do. So when we come to those changes, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move through those, cause it's, we, we talked about that at length when we went through this. Um, there are a number of places where we had these, the definitions had these lists. Uh, like there was a, we had, definitely here the definition of business service establishment and then we gave examples. Jesse recommended we remove all those examples because all that does is create the questions of, well, is that all we can do? And the answer to that question is no. We generally, anything that's a business service establishment, some sort of retail can be done. Um, in light of the fact of a code enforcement issue that we had last year, um, we added a limitation on camping or campgrounds to, that those are, those can be for no more than fourteen days. Otherwise it begins to more, look more like a residential situation. Um, we, that's a, our definition of church, we just had a cleanup, a clerical cleanup. This is another one of those situations where we have a, we don't have a city engineer on staff. We contract for those services. So sometimes, some of the things in this ordinance that says city engineer's gonna do, it's gonna be done by a designee of either the city or the engineer. Where?
Uh, the next miss fail, including.
Yeah, it, the, it took out the E and put in I N G.
It showed the D, it's not easy.
So if I go simple mark through, see it says a clear, including. I wanted, I left it all markup. If you have other questions like that where it looks weird, I'm happy to turn off. Uh, we took out, that's another, the, there, the club or, or lodge or nonprofit. There are all kinds of different clubs and so instead of just listing some representative samples, we just took out the, I mean, everybody pretty much knows what kind of clubs have their own, uh, lodges. Um, commercial recreational facility, again, we had a list. Uh, Jesse recommended we remove that list and we did. Or I'm recommending that be done. Same with, uh, outdoor recreational facilities. Conditional zoning, that creates issues given the way that we've approached, uh, special use permits in this ordinance. So we just, we deleted the, the definition entirely. Um, clerical cleanup in the definition of festival. Um, floor area, uh, we had a, kind of a complicated definition of floor area. So rather than list out the things that would be included, we did it like, I think it's typically done in the industry and just refer to the heated areas of the structure as what falls within the definition of floor area. Um, remove the reference, the gas tank sales in order to avoid having those types of uses. Um. Guest house, again, um, we, the, we added a restriction of no more than fourteen consecutive days for a guest house. Otherwise it begins to look like a residential situation. Um. Sure. The change was we added for no more than fourteen consecutive days. We can stop here and talk, there's a, down further in, there, there, one of the broader conversations that we need to have is the, is a conversation about addressing alternative dwelling units or accessory dwelling units. These are things commonly called tiny houses or those types of things. There's also a, there are areas where you've begun to see, I don't know what you call them, pods or the cargo things. Some folks are turning those into houses. Some of them look pretty poor. Some of them I've seen, they've managed to really dress up and they look nice. And some of the tiny homes, the same thing. This ordinance doesn't straight up address a lot of that type of thing if that is something that you all are interested in doing. As we talked about during the, the adoption of the ordinance as a whole, we have a lot of small properties in our R-one section and it would be very difficult to add. If, if you started putting a lot of even tiny homes on some of these parcels, you're gonna create traffic issues and those kind of things. I simply raise it because Jesse said it may be something that you all need to begin to think about and we need to address on our ordinances. I'm not saying. Yeah, we have minimum square footages and we have setback requirements and we have restrictions on the number of accessory units and those types of things. But the, and, and so effectively, I think, under this ordinance, you all don't really allow, other than in very specific circumstances like the attached apartments and guest house for limited purposes. You all don't really have, allow accessory dwelling units as a matter of right. And there are some ordinances that do in order to provide what, the, the concept of workforce housing. I mean, you have a lot of, I mean, there, with the inland port area and the medical community, teachers, I mean, the public service type folks and, and, and your hourly employees. Sometimes they may have, find it difficult to find homes around the areas that they work and they wind up having to drive a, a piece. So there are some jurisdictions that are beginning to consider adopting allowances for folks to, or even developments that involve these, these smaller, more affordable type housing. Not low income, not tax credit type things, not anything like that. Just a different type of housing that fills what some people see as, as a niche. Again, that's a, that's a broader conversation, but it's something Jesse raised and some of the, some of the suggestions and marks in this, in the, in the ordinance address that.
Question going back to the guest house.
Sure.
I had a situation this past week where it's in R-one. And the new buyer thought he could add on, they closed the garage, go home with the one bedroom, that was there. And if that's the case, they could not do that. But in that guest house, that is not a rental home. That guest house is just fourteen days.
If you adopt this amendment, that would be the case. It will impact your ability for people to do those types of things. What's that?
We come with the argument of being built out, my shop and my garage and everything else and rentals out.
Those are, I mean, the idea, I think that, that the thought was is that for Airbnbs, VRBOs, that type of thing, those tend to be no more than a week. Fourteen days is longer than typical. But what this is, what, with that addition, what's, what, what that's intended to, to push back against is the rental of those places for, I mean, just renting by the room, like the pad split issue that some jurisdictions just south of you are having to deal with and those types of things.
Well, if you go back to my example, when we say this gentleman bought the main house and it's just the garage is attached to a guest house with one bedroom, one bath scenario. And we say that he could not rent that one bedroom, one bath house for a year's time for the, a year's time of lease.
If that was, if that was the existing use, it's possible that's a non-conforming use. It would depend on what the use had been.
But they, they used, the original owner used it whenever guests came to attack. It wasn't that way. But the new owner thought he could take that garage and turn it into two bedrooms. And now have a crew that.
If it's an R-one, then probably not.
But I went through that with them, but I wasn't moving with fourteen consecutive days because that's saying.
That's new, that's not in the.
Right, I did you, but that's saying somebody who owned the guest house, you only rent it for fourteen days. They cannot do a twelve-month lease in somebody's, that house, that guest house.
I think, I think what it says later on, if they get a special use permit, they can do that.
Okay, that would be where.
That is something that comes before you. I mean, there's.
If it's a guest house, that was a guest house. Had an temporary accessory buildings that I could rent out for fourteen days at a time. That means I can rent out each side of my garage for fourteen days at a time. My whole garage.
Oh, that's not gonna make somebody very happy.
You want, so is that the consensus to remove that fourteen-day requirement or prohibition?
But could that person, under the scenarios like that, get a special use? And now I've got full-time, really a multifamily on this R-one property like they're still in trying to. And I just happen to see the crush there when they ask. And they were looking for value in permanence, so. Get it now to, or get restricted to somebody's property, yes. They can only do that guest house for fourteen days. If they don't do a twelve-month lease, they can't do that. They would come to a special period where he would, they would speak in favor of it and the neighbors would speak most likely in opposition of it. And then you all four hear from that guy. So go either way. Delete it or take that.
Can we add the language for one per property?
Yes, I mean, if you, it, yeah, you, sure you can do that. You'll do that, the use table's down below. Y'all want motels?
I think here in our regular conversations, that is a no for one public to come out. It's specified unless it was defined as a, as a, we've got a bootie hotel on the historic district.
Well, bed and breakfast and the ends are defined separately. So what we're talking about motel is what we, what you envision is you're driving along some of the backroads and around here, across the south where you've got two stories, maybe even one story.
They can, a lot of those in Cornwall, you can just leave them there as far as I can.
Isn't that one big out there? That new section, our. We have, see, what was it? It's bow down, industrial, five miles from here.
Oh.
Yeah. Is that where the motels can go?
Yeah.
Many Spaniard, four sixty-five.
Really only has, put them in a particular zoning classification. Like you're gonna set up a special district, which I frankly wouldn't recommend to just add administrative burden. That's the definition. And so if we don't have them, then I'm deleting the definition.
But you know, Mike, talking about an exit, it has these locations as good for. Is there a definition for hotels?
Yes.
Yes, right, it's in the lobby. Okay, I'm good, I'm good.
It's just to clean up on definition for office. Palm broker, we're removing the public display. You all, the rest of the ordinance tends to be resistant to any kind of outdoor storage. So that's applied to the palm brokers if we have one. Recreational vehicle space, we put the same fourteen-day limitation that were on camp, camping sites and campgrounds. Restaurant, we removed the examples as we did with other definitions. We, we read, we refined the, the ordinance with regard to schools. There were special, separate definitions for special school and trade school. And basically it didn't make any sense to do that, especially in this day and time. So we, we just have schools. Variance, that's defined term, but there's a whole section on dealing with variances. And I just need to, once we have, before we finalize this, make sure that everything that's in this variance definition is consistent with what we have in the variance requirements. Because in your variance section, there are certain prohibitions on variances like lot size and things like that that you all said, we're not gonna bury those. We've set those in the ordinance and we're not, you can't get a variance from. We took out the definition of floating zone. It doesn't make any sense given the way that we're, we've organized our zoning map. The, we cleaned up the definition for when we zone annexed properties. We took out some of these kind of catch-all provisions that were probably added in the template that we used that again, don't make any sense in our ordinance. That's cleanup. We had some section number cleanup. We went, we've had this issue with, oops, let me back up. We've had this issue with a couple of different tracks with this street frontage requirement. Our previous ordinance, and as the ordinance stands now, it's thirty feet. Based on some of the planning work and some of the review that Jesse had done, she recommended moving that to twenty feet. I don't, as attorney, I don't really have a strong recommendation one way or the other. You all are much more familiar with the properties and the ones that we've had issues with. It will, for some of the flag lots we have in the town, it may make it, it may eliminate the requirement for them to come get variances from us or to, or create issues regarding conforming lot status to reduce it to twenty feet. That's a little small for even a resident, it's, it's too small for a commercial drive. So this is probably gonna be your residential properties.
So you measure from the center line of the street or from the edge of the pavement?
It's gonna be, it, it's gonna be, since it's public street, it's a good question. It's probably where the pavement is.
The edge.
The edge of the pavement is where that would be measured at.
The edge of the pavement or the centered line?
Edge of the pavement.
Okay, cuz I, I live on four forty-one and.
That's a state housing though.
Oh, okay.
So there are different requirements on state houses.
Okay.
We, there are, I, when you all get the copy of this, you're gonna see these special use provisions, accessory apartments, caretaker residence, guest house. There's gonna be a note that talks about addressing, it's what we talked about a minute ago of, of accessory dwelling units. What I heard you all say is that we're not gonna do anything with that right now. I'm gonna leave those notes in there so that when Megan.
We, we talked about earlier in the admission, you were gonna add about one of the ones.
Yep.
Our accessory.
That, that's taken care of here. When you're talking about accessory apartments, detached or attached. Now remember, there's a difference in R-one and R-two, what you can do in terms of attached and detached accessory apartments.
Where? In R-one, you're saying in that, in that chart, one bedroom.
Yes, or accessory, yes.
Yeah, and then, and then where is it saying that in this?
Doesn't say it in this particular provision, that's in your use chart.
Okay, okay. You know, there's like four charts that I keep. Because we gotta go, I go there first before I get into all these other details to see if it's even assessed, be allowed first. And then those four charts, it's not what would be shared with these folks. Because we go there first, if we can have it, it will say it right here, how it. Then you get into the nuts and bolts of it.
Home occupations, I frankly don't recall whether there was a whole lot of conversation about this when we were adopting this ordinance. Our current, currently our ordinance says home occupations are not permitted in accessory buildings. And the thought there is, is that it's a home occupation, it means you ought to do it in your home and not in, now, in some building that you build. Jesse, in her, when she annotated it, she queried whether you really wanted it that way. And I think the mayor may have asked a question about that as well. So I've highlighted it, I haven't marked it one way or the other, so it's something we need to discuss.
I don't remember this part, but my home office is next door to my house, so I'm shocked. Do we need to put a definition of home occupancy?
Well, down here, it says that, that you have a certain prohibition on home occupations and you, then right above it, you have a list of things that are allowed as home occupation. And if you look at the list of what things that are allowed, most of those are office-type things. I don't know that there's any merit to requiring it to be in the home, but it was in the ordinance that was adopted. Jesse pointed it out, so. So if as manufacturing and fabric, fabrication accessory to retail, do we need to talk about what that may be? If you're selling something, if it, that's clearly retail. If you're building something and then you're selling it, that's what this is talking about. When you're fabricating and, and I can't, I can't think of, I mean, the things that come to mind are things like Clayton Homes and things like that, but which clearly is not applicable here because you're talking about a thousand square foot limit. But you could have things like, oh, I don't know, jewelry. But you could have things like, oh, I don't know, jewelry, a place that builds, assembles computers, that, and then sells them, I mean, those kind of things. I'm trying to think of another good example of something that may actually be around here. This, your ordinance doesn't really, it, it, it says that if you have that kind of thing, it's limited to 1,000 square feet. And it requires, if you're gonna do fabrication or manufacturing, it requires coming to the city and getting a permit to do it. Because it can be impactful, it can be noisy, it can be dusty, it can be, depending on what it is. So it may, it's one of those things where if it's gonna happen, then perhaps someone at the city needs to at least approve it. So the city knows what's going on, so when people go up and ask. That's what it says. We made some, she had suggested and, and things with regard to parking and storage of recreational vehicles to go from 24 hours. I mean, things like, I mean, simple things like that. We have, one of the special uses is, special use provisions has to do with self-storage. And we limit them to a single-story buildings. She, Jesse, in her review, just queried whether you wanted that or not. I, I'm not sure that there's a place where you would want two stories self-storage in Demeris, but I don't know. She queried, so I marked it.
See that name where you have those whole four stories out of 365? But I don't see anything more than the one story left behind behind Jefferson's back this way.
Conservation subdivision, as we, we taught, discussed for the benefit of folks that may not have been here. Conservation subdivisions, you set aside more green space in a, in a particular, and, and again, with the built, with sweetgrass already being zoned, I'm not real sure where one of these would go in the current city limits of Demeris. Now, there may be property that's annexed where you may want to do this, but there's probably merit to leaving this in there. You set aside green space, and for that, you get density bonuses. So in other words, if you bring it in as an R1, but you do conservation subdivision, if you could do 15 units, then you get a 50% density bonus, so you can do 21 units. Is how that works. Jesse's query wanted me to ask you all, do you wanna set, do you wanna set the bonus instead of a percentage increase at a maximum number of units? Because you're really not gonna be doing those on any properties that are currently in the city, and they're gonna be annexed, and we don't have any idea what those would be. And because it would be something that you would zone, and you could impose the conditions, I, I think, my opinion is leave the ordinance like it is currently, and then deal with. Manufactured homes, we've been talking about those tonight. This, the way we define manufactured home is that the manufactured home shall consist of two-ly, fully enclosed parallel sections and a total width of at least 20 feet. Single wides tend to be eight feet wide, and so some people, there are, there are ordinances that say that the manufactured home is 16 feet if minimum width. I looked at a number of ordinances for the way these are defined, and 20 feet seems to be the minimum. But it was, it was highlighted by Jesse in her review, so I wanted to bring it to your attention. I recommend leaving it at 20 feet, especially since we only, we've got other requirements now for mobile homes. It's not gonna apply a whole lot of times, and to the extent it applies in the play, in the mobile home park, it's probably appropriate to leave it where it is, I think. She recommended remove, we have, we have temporary use permits for special outdoor events that are approved by the zoning administrator, which in this case would be marked. The original ordinance had that as a do not exceed 15 consecutive days. That, and that suggests some sort of fair or something like that. She suggested reducing that to three consecutive days, because effectively, the only, you all probably aren't gonna have a fair in town. But again, it's marked, and if you all disagree, we can change it back. We've got certain, we've got certain off-street parking requirements. There's a suggested ad of if public parking is located within 200 feet of the building or use, upon approval of the zoning administrator, the requirement for off-street parking areas may be waived. There's some merit to having this, because it, it keeps you from paving areas that don't need to be paved to provide parking for businesses when there's plenty of parking already around. The city did this when we entered into the license agreement with Piedmont in order to provide additional parking for some of our downtown businesses with those Piedmont lots that aren't used in the evenings and the weekends. So this is, this is probably a, a good, good addition.
Excuse me, that, that brings up the issue of parking if the post office is gonna be moving up here. So is there gonna be handicap parking? And if so, is there gonna be, is it gonna be specially marked like it is down at the post office?
If they redo the parking here for the post office, yeah, that's a legal requirement to have a certain number of designated spots for.
Also, another issue is coming out of the post office where it is now. There is a traffic light, there is no traffic light here. So that's gonna be a real hassle, cuz people come and get their mail just about every day.
Those are the requirements that we'll have to look at with DOT once our. It was our neighbor gave us two beds, and one section of his bed is just for the driveway entrance and exit with DOT, that is a whole separate area outside of the legal of the parking lot.
Can you update us on the status of the post office moving down here? It's like the most dangerous place in Demeris, getting in and out of there, but I know it takes a lot to get it moved. Are you still planning to move it down here? What's the timetable?
We're gonna, yeah, we're getting this together, we're gonna start looking at cost and everything else, so those are. It could be two years.
Well, that's one, just.
In other way, in other way, if we sign the papers today, it'd be done in.
They have a lease down there with the federal government, is that how?
Yes. It's on a year-by-year basis right now, July 1st of each year. They did have a 30-year spread that expired three years, two years ago.
Like she said, it's very dangerous, not to mention the fact that a lot of people don't pay attention to the parking for the post office only either, so. We don't wanna start enforcing that with policemen, I'm not suggesting that at all.
We have to give them.
They have better things to do, but that, they don't pay any attention to it about half the time.
We have to specify 19 parking spaces for the post office.
19?
Down in here.
How many? Wow.
Yes, I don't think they get 19 people one time.
No, no, they don't.
But it's the square footage requirement is a formula.
So in, there are a number of places where there were, there were places where the zoning administrator was allowed to make certain allowances or provide certain permits. In some places, it was in response to an application that would be in writing. Some of the places, there were, it provided the opportunity for the zoning administrator to make decisions, but it wasn't clear how that request came. So in four or five places, we added upon written request into the ordinance, and so you'll see that in a couple of places. We have a provision for reduction of required parking if there's alternative transportation arrangements, which tends to mean bicycles. And so we add, Jesse suggested, and I put the language in there, that's authorized. Business or property owner has to install bicycle racks to facilitate that. We've had some issues regarding lighting, so we have at, there's a, there's now a provision added to the lighting provisions. It says for uses other than single-family residential or duplexes, a lighting plan must be provided before a building permit will issue. So the city gets an opportunity to look at what the, they intend to do in terms of lighting.
On this way, it is an existing business, and they don't need to put up new light.
Well, then they probably need, we, we can add a provision that if, that says that if there, if any, any change in lighting on anything other than requires.
See, the discussion y'all has been about the Exxon station over here, look at it at night. Folks that live back that way, but still, you may have noticed additional lighting coming back there.
I keep my blinds, Paul, cuz I don't wanna.
Even when you're driving, I ask where this is coming from. It could be to some people, and that's that fine line was excessive.
To show the age of the, of some of the definitions, we, this particular ordinance still referred to drive-through photo finishing booths. Back to the future. We, in the, in this particular title, we took out the section regarding signs, because we have a separate sign ordinance. We left in the provision for murals, and there are, I'm, I'm frankly recommending deleting this, because there are some First Amendment and enforcement issues with this. So unless there is a good reason to leave it in, and we need, and I need to look at ways to recraft this so that we don't run into potential First Amendment issues, my recommendation is to delete the mural section.
I know this comes up several times downtown, you know, even on our Old City Hall, or, or in Oursoul, or Piedmont Building with farmhouse, things of that sort, so it does come up in conversation.
Some of us follow the historic district too.
So, I mean, give that some thought, I, and let me know if we need to, I need to revamp this one in a way that we avoid some of the issues.
I say everybody needs to revamp it, it can come up.
Okay.
Easy. So Piedmont could wanna do it with their hearts, the property or something.
There's been a good bit of, the county has gotten a little bit of flack for their, some of their code enforcement. Our, the ordinance, as it currently stands, says notwithstanding any other provision, and, and we've got provisions in our nuisance and in our property maintenance that, that address some of this. But in the, specifically with regard to the property appearance standard in the zoning ordinance, we had a provision that said lots of 20 acres or more, or with frontage of 600 feet or more on existing public streets, had a responsibility to control vegetation. The reason for that has to do as, as much with, is it, it's sightliness, but also with regard to safety. Because of just simply the fact that we're in the city rather than in the county, that's been reduced to two acres and 50 feet. So it's only gonna, it's only gonna impact some of your larger lots. And again, we've got other codes that are gonna address this as well. But that change was made, I wanted to explain to you why.
A question.
Sure.
Lot up here, Bang Street. What's his name here? That grass hasn't been cut in two years. Code enforcement fails when the coast is not a house on that lot, and they can't enforce it.
I don't know what size that lot is, but if it's two acres, then. We can reduce this to, we can, we can also define it so that if it's just a vacant lot, regardless of size, it has to be done, so we, if that's something you think we need to do, we can add that into that definition.
That's a lot coming in our subdivision, it looks horrific. Do you remember the size of that thing?
It's got more than 50 feet, it might exist, I'm sure.
Where was that issue?
I think it made, it was his name, it's.
We'll handle that then, we'll talk to them later.
All right, parking in front yards on single-family lots. Jesse pointed this one out, thinking that this may be enforcement issue, but I wanted to just raise it, and we, you all can give me some direction. Let me blow it up so everybody can read it. Basically, it prohibits parking on non-paved areas in single-family lots.
Any gravel lots?
Let's see if it mentions gravel. Concrete or asphalt?
Maybe it's gravel there too.
I really wasn't looking for it. Grass, I haven't.
A little red and water right up to here. Just to be known, this, you can't afford the city to bring you up, trouble, pressure on the gravel, and we charge you whatever they charge us.
Right, I went to the, I have gravel down there now, we, horses crossed the wrong line, but. Along with the bricks, the hallways, and dug by hand.
So in your residential zoning district, your fences or walls are brick, stone, wood, stucco, wrought iron, or split rail? You don't allow chain link? You don't, and so what you allow in terms of fencing is what's listed there. So I didn't know, Jesse pointed it out. She queried whether you wanted to allow chain link or chain link with the, the vinyl coating. I highlight it, and just need from some direction from you all in terms of what you all want in light of the vision you all have for the city.
I wonder if you want vinyl siding, you like coated, or you want regular vinyl siding? Or you don't use the vinyl coating, cuz it, it comes with a coach too. That's what it's looking like.
Pretty straight generally.
Hallfire, that's not all of this.
Can you hear pretty loud?
I think you're out in very.
Yeah, I had a take on that.
Hallfire should be one of the, you want your hallfire and your.
What I'll do is I will, I will look at some other ordinances to see what, how they define what kind of fencing material is allowed, and I'll make a recommendation.
Cause that, like, if it's not facing the street, it still has to be, like, you can have decorative fence on the street, but then, like, how that can you do?
Where it is now, it's, it's any, any residential areas at all.
At all, full amount has to be there.
Re-look at that too, John.
I will.
Well, I've got gavines.
But it's not gonna affect you, it's new.
I'm good. I've got some nice shrubs, like, it doesn't look like right now.
It says about new. You're fine.
Thank you. It's my shirt, my dog's gotta have.
Almost done. So one of the other, in, among your architectural requirements, is your, is you prohibit exterior metal siding and standing seam or corrugated metal walls. I mean, tho, those provisions are intended to prohibit metal buildings essentially. And it's, these, I think these areas, this is specific to residential areas. But it's something to consider. I mean, there are some metal products now that are attractive. The way it reads now is that those types of things are prohibited.
I would hate to have them prohibit a garden shed or a she shed in the backyard that was a metal.
These are primary structures, these aren't, that does not mean the accessory structures.
Are you saying that your house can't have a metal roof?
No. No, it's metal siding.
Okay. All righty.
One of the things that was clear during the public comment was a desire to limit residential growth. One of the ways to do that suggested by the housing model variety provision. And again, I'm not sure there's any property currently where you could put thirty or more single-family detached dwelling units currently in the city, but you could certainly, there are some properties just outside that could be annexed where that could occur. The way the ordinance currently reads is that in those neighborhoods of that size, there have to be at least four different housing models. The recommendation, if you want to encourage more upscale housing and the more upscale builders to come in, is to increase that to six. Another thing that you can do is you can impose requirements that there won't be more than two of any one kind within a certain number of houses. That becomes hard to do when you're dealing with a shotgun subdivision though. So I'm not sure.
Six homes, there's a lot of them.
You rotate that amongst those.
Yeah, I think, no, one of them too.
What they're talking about is just like out of Combs back here, they typically will build four to six malls. And that's it. And so they've got those numbers down to a science of what it costs to build that house. So that's what they do. Of course, they had more if they wanted to, but they weren't limited then.
I don't, I don't, given, I don't understand it.
Will you go back up?
This is all buildings or no building. My workshop is metal, is that?
But you're existing.
You're existing. This would be new, and I, I was wrong. I told, I told her that didn't apply to accessory buildings, but the way this is drafted, it does.
I would have been on there for a session, but we scrub out.
Not with the availability of wooden buildings the way they are now, I wouldn't accept it would be.
Again, you're limiting somebody's rights.
Right, that's true.
We talked about this, this came up earlier when we were talking about height of buildings, the way the ordinance currently reads, it limits it to two stories. The standard kind of is thirty-five feet. That, you can, you can get three, as Mark said, you can get three stories in the thirty-five feet. But with the pitch of roofs and things like that today, it's really, really difficult to do. So effectively thirty-five feet is two stories.
Excluding the basement.
Including basements. But it, having thirty-five feet, that puts a limit on it to, of the height, so that you don't have someone build two, they call it two stories, but it's a forty or fifty foot tall building. We made some, there's some suggested changes with regard to the application requirements for amendments. There had, was a provision in there to allow the administrator to waive requirements. That, that is, that's likely to create problems if he were to do it, or she were to do it for anybody. Then we would have issues about fairness, so the, and the requirements for submittal are pretty minimal. And if they simply can't provide something, then they can at least explain why they can't do it. But we, there is a change to allow for the administrator to request additional information if that person thinks it's necessary to properly evaluate the request. I don't know why it's doing this. You all limit the filing of applications to twelve months after a denial. State law says you have to do six months. You can do longer. Jesse suggested that I ask. Again, it's one of those things where if you're, if you're wanting to limit the amount of zoning activity, leaving it at twelve months is the thing to do. You can always waive that on a denial as well. The default rule is twelve months.
Don't worry, before they can come back and ask, but you can waive it.
You can.
But you still go to the minimum of six months.
You, you, the state law requires six months, but you can, you can increase it to twelve months by ordinance, which you all have done. Right? These are the three things that under your ordinance cannot be varied. You cannot get a variance for minimum lot size, minimum heated floor areas. And then the one, this one standard is you can't get a variance to allow it, you just not otherwise permitted in the zoning district. So in other words, you can't get a variance to allow multifamily and single family. Some jurisdictions have a lot of things you can't vary, some don't have any. Those are the ones you have. If you, if you all want to change that, now would be the time to do it. I think we talked about that when we went through this process before.
Thomas, if we've got an existing lot of record that's seven thousand square feet. And our minimum now is ten thousand square feet, but it's a lot of record that hasn't been changed. What are we doing?
It's a, it's a, it's a non, legal non-conforming lot. We made some changes to the application requirement. I mean, there's no, there's really no need for four written sets. Two and then a digital set is more than sufficient, saves paper. This one, I'm not sure how often this will come up, given the size of the, most of the developments in, in Demerit. But I've litigated this issue in other areas on a couple of occasions. You'll have someone get a development permit, they get going, then they run into rock, that's likely to happen around here. And they don't get it done within the two-year period. And then they either have to start all over, or they have to fight for an extension. What, we've added a provision, and I'd suggest adding provision that says upon written application and for good cause shown, there may be one grant of extension of no more than twelve months. So it effectively gives them three years from the time they get an LDP to get, get their final plat submitted.
The early run into that issue was due with the real estate depression, but everything stopped. So that's where you would see that.
Changes in names, digital version addition. With regard to site planning is like the LDP is one additional, or twelve-month extension. Digital copy. Two copies with digital. We add, Jesse suggested, and I think it's a good idea that for appeals, for the, the type of variance or hardship variances, add the requirement, the hardship cannot be of a purely financial nature. I mean, there's always gonna be a financial aspect to it, but they've got to show one of these other requirements, and they've got to show something in addition to just pure finances. We're gonna post. I think that's it.
She's been in the meeting that day.
Yep, we're back to the top. So that's it. I'm gonna forward this. I'll forward copies to you all. I will send to Megan, she can put up on the website. I'm happy to send versions to, my email I addressed, but it'll be up on the website. Any questions or?
It is a public hearing, so is anyone else like to speak on the matter?
Not on that matter, but I did want to thank the city on one area that I think has been a big improvement, and that's trying to enforce code variances in the city as it regards abandoned and vacant housing in the area. I know it's very difficult to do, takes time, but at least we are trying now. We have some code enforcement, and I amend you that. Thank you.
Thomas, on the land beach map update that we have to do, how will we vote, how will they vote on that, change that with the mobile home?
Did y'all do a first read on that last?
We did.
Okay, so yeah, that, you can. Yes, that, you all, when you get to number seven, I'm sorry, when y'all get to number seven on the agenda, it'll be a first read on the text amendments, and if you all want to, you can go ahead and do second read and adoption of the zoning map.
The new map is dated May the twelfth.
New map, yes.
Because that map will replace the one from November.
And that section of zoning for that, can we approve that as well?
The ta- the new tables?
Yes.
Yeah, you all do first read on that last month?
We did the first read on the, on the mobile home district.
We have not done a first read on what you just.
No, that, I know that, but were the use tables, the residential use tables that had the mobile home?
No.
Added? All right, we probably need to wait to adopt the map until those are in place, so we'll do all that next month. We'll do, so do first read on these texts. I would recommend doing first read on these text amendments. And then next month, we will do second read and adoption of everything. We'll need to redate the map.
Can we go ahead and do that now since we already had it printed?
We can. I hesitate to do that since we don't have the use tables for the MHP. That, that's my only limitation. What's that?
No use table, there's no use, but that just keeps the map.
Or no use table, they can do anything they want, is the other argument.
Okay. And that's why we didn't have a frame for today.
All right.
Thank you all for your attention.
We'll close that public hearing. Thanks for move on to consideration of zoning ordinance. We're gonna have this as yours as a, as a first reading, correct, for the second reading next month.
Yes.
So this will be posted, so if y'all have other changes you'd like to make, please come back, and we'll make those for our second reading.
Thomas, on the mobile home land use, we will have to re-advertise and put the sign back out there for our June twelve meeting.
Did y'all do a, I mean, this was part of the public hearing tonight.
Correct. So we did a separate advertising, correct if I'm wrong, but and I put up the zoning notice sign on the property.
Okay, well then, then in that case, with regard to the mobile home, with regard to the map and the mobile home ordinance, that needs to be tabled to our June twelve meeting, and that way we do not have to re-advertise it.
Okay. We need, we need that motion, gentlemen.
So you, someone needs to make a motion to waive first reading of text amendments for Article eighty-nine. And then there'll be, need to be a separate motion to table the zoning map and the text amendment for the mobile home park provisions until June twelve.
When we question that tabling the first reading, then that would mean we have a first reading next one.
No, not table, you're waiving, you're waiving first reading of the text amendments. You are tabling the mobile home, the map and the mobile home.
Okay. Or the second reading of that.
Correct.
On our next meeting.
That is correct.
All right, gentlemen, we all heard the motion.
I'd like to make the motion as stated.
All those in favor, move that forward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
It was the second.
So which? Jimmy was. In the first one, so we have that down.
All right. Thanks. Let's move on to consideration of the two estimates for home restorations. We'll, um, gentlemen, move forward, we'll put on names together or separate, however you prefer your motion.
The June meeting, if you want to reiterate, the June meeting is not the first week of June.
I've got that on my city members, yes. So then, the June meetings due to the audit, they have to do their presentation, and they will not be ready until Thursday, June the twelfth. So that's what we have our regular council meeting. We've got to approve the audit, and they have to turn it into state by June.
All right, gentlemen, where is the point of entertaining the motion for those two? Estimates for the fire department, police department for the water.
Make the motion for the water, then against for both.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? Thank you. All those in favor to move forward with that? Let's move on to consideration of engineering services to discuss the contract for engineering work for the, for the city hall building here that we're sitting in now. It's nineteen thousand six hundred dollars, and this is just for engineering services. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the black ring on our contract for June six.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All those in favor to move that forward?
I've got a question. Is, is that necessary until you decide whether or not the post office is gonna be moved up there?
It is part of that process. It's not, it is necessary to continue all those conversations, I suppose. So we at least come up with a quote to get the work done. Next is a quote from ACG, eleven thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars to extend some of the fire coverage of the fire laws in this building. We talked about maybe even tabling this or until we have at least a clear plan from engineering, but it is up to you, you guys.
The motion to table the sign.
All those in favor to table the sign. Next, up for consideration of purchase of a new truck to replace a broken truck for the fire, for the water department. They have a bid for forty-one thousand three hundred and one dollars. You did ask for approval up to forty-five thousand dollars to purchase a new driving truck of one fifty for the water department. Gentlemen, we need a motion if you would like to move forward with that, to allow him up to forty-five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve him to go up to, but not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars in person.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All those in favor to move forward with that purchase? Next is consideration of MPE services. This is new coves that have died, went out, and these new coves are already on the ground. So this is just approval of something that we already had to do. It was an emergency. We have two invoices, one for twenty-eight thousand and one for forty-one thousand. These first were sewage coves. We need a motion to approve both of these items. Thank you. Do we have a second? All those in favor to move forward with those two items? All right. Next is our second reading of a black ordinance. This has been in our packet for the past two months. This ordinance, Thomas, do you want to speak on this?
Sure.
Pretty much after almost a year of time, after the code enforcement comes out, the rights tickets, and you go to hearings, then you're finally given notice that you were called under the white ordinance, and your tax will be what?
You can increase up to seven times. So in other words, if the, you typically pay fifty or sixty dollars in property tax, you'll pay four hundred you'll pay four hundred and twenty dollars in property tax until you get the property. And again, you've had a year to bring your property into compliance. If you don't, then you pay more in property tax, so there's some negative incentive to not either to correct the blight problem or to not permit your property to get to that point to begin with. On the, on the flip side, the care it is, is that if you get your property back into shape and get it removed from that for a period of time, you get a tax break, and your property taxes are decreased, I think either a half or a quarter. So it incentivizes, it provides a source of revenue for the city to continue to do court enforcement with, on other properties.
This is the second reason. Would anybody about to speak on the blight ordinance?
I have a question.
Ma'am.
Is there any way to find out the status of where some of this, you know, legal stuff takes place, where we stand? I'm in a situation where we've had an ongoing problem for years, but I don't really know.
That's a fair question. Thomas, can I ask you on how he can do that?
Is that information available for residential people to know where we stand?
When you, I guess, when you say know where we stand, have you gotten, have you gotten a note?
No, 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 I.
Her neighbor?
Yeah, neighbor.
Okay.
That has been made and, you know, nearly or whatever.
Well, there's a, I, the code enforcement officer has issued citations to about a half a dozen properties, and we're going to court on two of those on Wednesday. If you want to go to the next item, I'll pull that spreadsheet up, and I will give you all an address by address.
Well, you don't have to give it a snapper's by address.
No, no, just in general, what?
Whatever she by address, and open records that she can request is something I can just tell her from your report.
You can just tell her from the report, or you can, or Dave can tell her, because, I mean, he's got, we, he and I are working for the same spreadsheet.
But it's open for.
Yeah, it's entirely, all that's public record.
Thomas, tomorrow, we will get you the fire sheet.
Is that? Okay. And they come to city court, though. This is not a county court then?
We have our own municipal court. It'll be in this room right here on Wednesday, noon.
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
No more further discussion of blight ordinance. Looking at for a vote, council. Do we have a motion? Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? All those in favor to move forward with this ordinance? Next up is manager's report. Mark, what you got for us?
I'll attempt to make it short since it's, we've been here a while. Like we said a little while ago, our next council meeting is June 12th, six o'clock and seven o'clock, and that is due to our annual audit, because they have to finalize the report, send it to us, the company to review, and then if we have to be changed during the discussions. So typically, they would have made our first Tuesday in a month, but they did not, so. Thursday, the 12th. Both y'all are familiar that the county is contemplating doing the SLOSS vote for the 2027 election in December, November of 25. And council, I would encourage us to start with your ideas of SLOSS list projects. You know, we will be meeting with the county here shortly. I don't have a meeting time yet, but we'll be discussing this, I'm sure, in June, going forward. We do have a certified public manager's graduation for two folks, and that will start for them tomorrow through Thursday, and that is Megan Chastain and Casey Chastain, and that's her, her uncle, so don't thank you. Because in their class, people get the idea they were married, look at each different spirit. No offense, Casey. So it's a very big deal for both of these folks, and so far, Assistant Chief James Montello will be attending the same class starting in September. Update on where we are on downtown, still in Van Stan is the concrete gathering, with the finish on comes May twentieth, and that will give it that concrete thirty days sealed, and once that is done, the last thing for most part to be done was right then we installed wrought iron handrail around that, but couldn't put it down until that sealant is there. And then all that's left over electrical is installing the fixtures. So all that's pretty much on, will be finished by June the first, exactly, the music is downtown?
June 12th.
June 12th, yeah. So all that will happen there. On our website, you will see an addition tab. Facebook only will keep the videos of our history of our meetings up to ninety days, so we had to add YouTube. And if you go to our website, you will see a tab that says City Council Recording. If you scroll down, and if a meeting is going on like today, then you have to sign on YouTube or Facebook. You can click right there on the recordings, and then the line below that will be all our previous recording from the last, that three years.
Oh, yes.
So, and he had to move those, and it doesn't let him go in sequence, so if you look at it, you say, hey, those people are just stupid. They're all mixed up with the dates and years out of those three years. He's hoping to be able to fix that later, but we had to get those. So that is up and running for tonight for the first time. So you do not have to sign on. You don't have Facebook. You only need YouTube, you can click right on our website. Part of the things that we were doing to finish up with our contract with Jesse is we're doing some additional training for Rhonda and Megan on permits, business licenses, and forwards. We, right now, we really didn't have a forward. If you wanted to annex your property, I would just have to make something up, because we don't have that. We are going through every possible form that we would need, and you fill out the return to us. We will be updating fees that will come to y'all, whether it's inspection fees, whether it's a filing fee. Because right now, the hospital, for them to rehab a large portion of the hospital, you only charge five hundred fifty dollars, because that's a rehab fee. They go to a major city, that can be ten, fifteen thousand dollars. We don't charge that, because we never really had that. So, so you'll see that stuff coming up to that degree. I will just take a few minutes, a couple of minutes, on our financials. In our financials today, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and on page one, you'll see cash balance that's up today, May twelfth. Cash on hand overall is three billion today, and cash on hand today, May twelve, three point five, round number there. And our operating cash for May thirty, for March thirty-first, nine hundred and six thousand, and today at eight hundred forty-six. That's included in that three point three or three point five. You go down three sections below there, you'll see average monthly expenses based on annual budgeted totals. Our general fund, folks, expenses from this month of March, round numbers, two hundred nineteen thousand dollars. And we only collect four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in property taxes. So that's where the transfers and the money comes from, because without the water department, the city general fund cannot even begin to operate, and that's where those monies have to help subsidize the city. And the water department's total expenses for the month was six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, or a total of expenses of eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. We do have three point seven months, we do have three point seven five of monthly liquidity, which means we could have no money today, and we can pay our bills for the next three and three quarter months ahead. Your goal is three to six months, so we're exceeding that minimum side in there. Page two, this is just our debt service each month with our water and sewer. We pay sixty-two thousand dollars a month each and every month for the bonds and the GPO loans that we have. And then our monthly service on this building is eight thousand dollars a month. Page four, our current income for the month of March, forty thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. And how much expenses do we have? Two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's payroll, that's insurance, that's retirement, that's everything across the board for George Power, gas, anything like you would have at your house. But that's where our tax, our tax digest is so low, because it's all mainly housing. It's not commercial industry and business. We just don't have that here at the deficit. With that, also, we had to do water transfers for the month of March. We only did sixty-one thousand dollars, which is very good. For the year, we have done a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and for a three-month average, that's forty-nine thousand dollars. And if I go to my budget amount of maybe three ninety, we have a, what's available on average is a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to transfer to hit our budgeted item, and that's an item we're trying to reduce of water transfers, because if you had debt service for a fire truck, for instance, it would have to come out of as a direct hit to the water department, moving that debt service over to the general fund, like that payment, if we don't have SLOSS or tax dollars identified as that payment source. Gross income this month for the water and sewer is seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. Our gross expenses is four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars, and our net income for the month is two hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. You go to page six, this shows you our annual budget for the water department of eight point three million dollars, and that's an average of six hundred ninety-two thousand dollars per month. And what we did this month was seven hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars. So it was about forty thousand dollars over our projections. Our expenses, six point five million, so our expenses are under budget also, so our budget this point time is going well with our water, we work ninety days. The last page is page seven, which is our SLOSS, current SLOSS. In the end of March, we had two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars in SLOSS account. As of May twelfth, we received a payment from the county, so we're at three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And on average, we do, it's still tax-free, roughly thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars. And that's where I was taking that number times seventy-two months to come up with two point two over the whole six-year timeframe of the new SLOSS as a projected number. So only thing that is, as far in the existing SLOSS dollars is the police department's car, their car payment, lease of forty-six thousand dollars that's due in August. So everything else is still available for road streets and bridges and water and sewer and listed by our spoken bar. But we've already made our one payment for fire in the month of March, which was ninety-four thousand dollars for five years. We've got one payment left, we get twenty twenty-six.
What we're thinking here is a.
Uh, no, because just making some projections, what is available to spend as of May twelfth is three hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. These are the gross totals that you see under original estimated cost. They projected we were going to bring in, we were going to have these numbers, a million two fifty-six and a million seven, but we're bringing in roughly thirty-one thousand dollars. So these balances are projected. Actual is three hundred thirty-six, which would leave us roughly two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars that's not spoken bar outside of that forty-six thousand dollar for August. So with that, I'll make a short sweep from that point, and unless anybody has any questions.
Lance is going to speak on.
Oh, my goodness. Lance, come forward, please. I broke something down, and I couldn't write my whole right, read my whole right, so I skipped it.
Y'all tired? I'm sorry to keep y'all here.
The noise is on, I mean.
I'm the assistant chief. My name is Lance Lee. I've been here for a little over a year. I wanted to have the council.
And discussion, and we wanted to put a forth. Um, hey, first, twenty twenty-five, I departed once again for the second time with the honor of representing Demerit, uh, tennis, some of that's very special to me. We honored a hundred and forty fallen firefighters this year, seventy from the twenty twenty-four year in the line of duty. And seventy-two were from previous years. I get very emotional about it. It's something I very care, passionate about it. I want everybody to understand it's not about me. It's about the foundation, being there for these fallen firefighters, their families, to give them recognition and the right.
All the day.
I was so proud by Ms. Megan over there. It is one large. It really is. It gives us chance, honor, respect, and have pride. It has a personal to me, Chief Sher. In twenty fourteen, brought me back to answer for his brother, who was a line of new death. I was privileged and honored to serve his family. I still am very privileged, not for the last twelve years to do it. Uh, as long as they'll accept me, the Secret Service and Homeland Security will approve my application. I'll be on the sacred ground of Emersburg again until I can't continue to serve. It takes over a thousand people to put on this weekend. They're all volunteers, and they all take on the expense themselves to put out for other families to make sure that their honored hero is recognized at the right time in a memorial forever entombed that was established in nineteen seventy-four after grounds were given to make the National Fire Academy in Emersburg, Maryland. So I wanted to take a minute and explain where I was for five days. And I do appreciate it that the city did work with me, Chief Sher, and those to make sure my duties were covered while I was gone and represent you, the city council, and the city of Demerit to the National Fire Academy, National Fallen Firefighter Foundation, and my family of who I represented and escorted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
President normally attends, and he's been able to shake previous, or four previous president's hands at this ceremony, because he lets every one of these guys come through that line. You can imagine that the Secret Service, like you said, they have to be approved. That day of this, there was a tremendous windstorm, and the president sat at the White House in Marine One and was not allowed to take off, so he could not attend this year. Ma'am?
He's still a little busy.
But it was all about the weather, because he wanted to be. Yeah.
Um, can I? I don't represent DDA, but they do have Music Monday coming up on June second from five thirty to eight thirty. It's a free event. They're having music, food, vendors, a balloon artist, bouncy house, and just more things. There's another June eighth.
With Holden Over Soul.
Yes. Are you familiar with all that?
Yes. Y'all have, might have heard or not, we are applying for a all-inclusive playground grant at the park to replace the existing. Can you get children have access to a lot of playground equipment to the area, but there's not a lot of equipment for them to get on with their situation? And there's been three built now in Hall County, Walkman Elementary School, the new Sandra Deal Elementary Schools, and Allen, and my wife told me the name of that park, anyway, another county park. And it's got rubber mats where it's real soft, it's got wheelchair accessible, merry-go-rounds. The swings, they have to be taken out of and put into some appropriate swings, musical items, hearing, eyesight, different things like this. And we have to raise approximately two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to the city for the fifty percent match. And Emily Herring, and what's her name, five oh one C three, something play?
Price to Play.
Price to Play. And they have researched this across the country. And so she's already set up the five oh one C three. She and her husband John will be our champions, will be kicking this blood racing off. But Jamie at Holden Over Soul is going to hold this on a Sunday.
June eighth.
June the eighth, where he's going to have all kind of food, especially hogs or pigs that he raised. June the eighth, where he's gonna have all kind of food, is especially hogs or pigs that he raises, a normal attire there. And the cost is fifty dollars per person, but Jamie, out of that fifty dollars, forty dollars, will go to the fundraiser. He's gonna cover the cost with only ten dollars. And our children, you know, under twelve, they just ask for donations, anybody under twenty-one is thirty. So just want folks to be aware, we're gonna be getting some signs up and some different advertisements for this, but these are the kind of things the mayor and, uh, the Herring's will be championing, the mayor and council around here shortly, once we hear some more. I've got the one grant for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, which is through DNR, the second grant, where it's a federal grant that DNR has recommended the city to be approved for, and this is plus the ten million dollars with the G dot, and so our grant, they, our grant writers doing an excellent job, we're gonna start getting some new offices here too, so we'll have to deal with that coming up too. So, that being said, June second and June eighth, great things.
Alright, anything else? Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Thank you, sir, second.